Good morning and welcome to the Coconino County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 6, 2020. This is a regular session and executive session of the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Board of Directors of the Board of Equalization and the Coconino County Flood Control District. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And for members of the public, we will let you know the process to speak during the call to the public. But first, let us just confirm the Board of Supervisors that are at the meeting this morning. I'm Liz Archuleta, Chair of the Board of Supervisors and also Supervisor of District 2, Supervisor Babbitt, District 1.
I am present, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Fowler, District 5.
Are you on a meeting?
I am, I'm sorry.
I don't see her on yet, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Parks?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. And Supervisor Ryan is, excuse, had a previous commitment. So we have at least three members of the Board of Supervisors here. We do have a quorum. So we will proceed and Supervisor, Vice Chair Fowler will be joining us shortly. So let me, the next item is a call to the public. And I am going to ask Mr. Peterson to let the public know how to indicate if you would like to speak during this portion of the meeting. Mr. Peterson?
Morning, Madam Chair and members of the public. If you wish to speak, please go down to the bottom of your screen and either enter a note in the Q and A if you wish to speak during Call to the Public or use the Raise Your Hand function. That will indicate to the chairwoman that you wish to speak to address the board during Call to the Public. Madam Chair, just one other quick announcement so you're aware the YouTube livestream is having difficulties this morning. We may get it up at some point. We'll post that on social, but we are available to the public on our Zoom link here.
Thank you very much, Eric. So now this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the Board of Supervisors regarding an item that is not on our agenda. Each member of the public has approximately five minutes to be able to do so. Please know we will not be able to discuss the item that you bring to our attention and we will not be able to act on it. But we would like to hear from you. Would any member of the public wish to speak to the Board of Supervisors at this time? Okay, seen none. Then I am going to close the call to the public and we will get to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is an agenda that contains several items that will be voted on with one motion. These are items that either are administrative in nature or we have had work sessions on them in the past. And thus we will vote on it with one motion. There are a few items that need to be removed from the consent agenda in order for staff to provide additional information. Those items or board members may wish to. And, well, I apologize. I actually just zoomed over the proclamation. So actually, let me just take a step back. Let's not do the consent agenda at this time. And let's go to our proclamation. I apologize. I lost my place in my agenda. But we do have a proclamation this morning, a very important one. This is consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Coconino County. And I want to thank my colleagues for putting this on the agenda. And County Manager Jane, who will be presenting this item?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we do have victim advocate Erin Lucky with us. Erin serves with the Victim Witness Services. He will introduce the proclamation and have a few words to share. We do have Heather Marcy from Northland Family and Elliot Rumpf and Shawnee Parofenikuk, I'm sorry, Shawnee, from Northland Family as well. But Madam Chair, I would recommend we turn the time to Erin.
Okay, Erin, welcome and thank you for joining us this morning. And then we will ask the others to provide comments after you present the proclamation, after the board votes on it. So welcome and go ahead.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So the Coconino County proclamation designating October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Coconino County. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior in intimate relationships used by one partner to exert power and gain control over the other. And whereas domestic violence can involve physical, sexual, emotional, economic, or physiological threats or action. I'm sorry, psychological threats or action. And whereas we have not forgotten the victims of domestic violence in the state of Arizona, including the 96 fatalities in 2019 and 73 fatalities thus far in 2020. And whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, gender, economic status, race, religion, sexual orientation, or education. And whereas nationwide, one in four women and one in nine men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. And 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. And whereas in 2019, our Coconino County Sheriff's Office assisted in 413 domestic violence cases. City of Page Police Department assisted in 365 domestic violence cases. And the City of Flagstaff Police Department assisted in 1,827 domestic violence cases. And whereas one in 15 children are exposed to domestic violence abuse each year, which is a significant negative factor in child's development, in a child's development. And whereas awareness of the problem is necessary to work together to prevent domestic violence, respond to needs of victims, speak out, and help ensure that offenders are held accountable. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge citizens to get involved to support our local nonprofits, serving survivors of domestic violence, and encourage healthy relationships to help end domestic violence.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved, Madam Chair?
And is there a second?
Second, Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. The proclamation is moved for approval by Supervisor Babbitt, seconded by Supervisor Parks. Why don't we go ahead and vote on the motion? And then I can ask for people to make comments. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. None opposed, passes unanimously. All right, thank you so much. And we're going to now, Erin, did you want to add any other comments or any information on, you know, public awareness campaign or activities that might be going on?
Yes, I would, thank you. I would like to mention that Victim Witness and a lot of partner agencies, including a number of businesses throughout Coconino County, were doing a campaign for healthy relationships. So in the bottom part of the proclamation, we mentioned that to encourage healthy relationships to help end domestic violence, where it is very important to recognize that domestic violence is a problem. Also known that prevention is a key part to this. And so we will really want to emphasize the healthy relationship part of this. So we are doing a number of things. We've released a video series that will come out every Monday and Friday of this month. It'll be on our YouTube channel, which is linked to from on our website. It'll also be, yeah, linked on our website. And we also are doing a community word search. Now, businesses and agencies throughout Coconino County in Williams, Tuba City, Page, and Flagstaff have put out a word, a big purple word, that has our website and a hashtag VWS Relationships. And members of the community and even members of that business or that agency can participate by going to our website and entering in those words to win some prizes. And those words are related to healthy relationships in some way. They're things like empowerment, love, joy, friendship. And just emphasizing that we want to. So it's our, our main objective is to really focus on healthy relationships and really focus on getting the word out to not just our stakeholders and the people that know who we are and the other agencies are, but to really, excuse me, to really know what we are throughout the community, throughout the county. Also, the video series does highlight our partner agencies and our satellite offices that some people might not know we have.
Well, thank you so much for sharing that. And I want to thank you, Erin, for what you do every day as a victim's advocate. It's a really important job. It's something that really, you know, assists our community members. And really, a lot of our victims would not be able to get through the situation that they're in and the aftermath of that without having an advocate like yourself to stand by their side. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you and thank you for letting me speak, Madam Chairwoman.
Absolutely. And I know that earlier County Manager Jane had mentioned that Heather Marcy, the Deputy Director of Northland Family Help Center, and Elliot Rumpf, and Shawnee Parofenikuk from the Northland Family Health Center might also be present. But I understand also that Shaleen Seward with Northland Family Help Center is also here. And then also Cece Mitchell with Sharon Manor. So Heather, I'd like to turn it over to you to make some comments. And then if there are any members of your team, your colleagues that are here, please introduce us to them. And again, thank you for what you do as the Director of Northland Family Help Center.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Board of Directors. We really appreciate your time today. You've been a longstanding community partner supporting our efforts, both monetarily, but through proclamations and attendance and awareness events. And that's been ongoing for many years and we deeply appreciate your support. And that's why so many of us are on the line today. It's quite motivating to come to these meetings, to all be together and supportive of the work that we're doing with so many partners. I see, you know, CASA on the line, folks from Sharon Manor, the Sheriff's Office, the County Attorney's Office. We all work together to ensure that victims are heard and met with compassion and that they have help seeking justice if that's what they so choose to do, have help with mental health services to process that trauma. And, you know, we recently had a domestic violence fatality. And so Danielle Reed was the latest victim in our state in Scottsdale three days ago. So it's really important that we keep these efforts going, that we keep the conversations going. It's a really sometimes difficult subject to talk about, but it happens and it continues to happen. And so what this community offers to the victims and survivors here is very important now, more so than ever with COVID. We know that folks are, you know, somewhat trapped at home. I think we've all been making efforts to provide services through telehealth to change the way we do intake through social media and email, whatever's safe for survivors right now. So I appreciate you all and your time. And as you said, our Executive Director, Shaleen Seward's on the phone. We did share this opportunity for the Zoom meeting with the residents of Northland Family Help Center. So Elliot Rumpf, the manager of that program, might have some survivors on the line with her as well, just to listen. And so they know how much their local government does care about them and how much you all work to try and end abuse. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. I'm wondering if there's others that would like to speak to the proclamation or just speak to the public about what your organization does to promote healthy relationships and address domestic violence. I'd be happy to open it up to anybody else who's on the line who wishes to speak to that.
Thank you. This is Shaleen Seward with Northland Family Help Center. I just wanted to include Heather did a wonderful job. Thank you, Heather. Just wanted to include that Northland is doing a social media campaign throughout this month, posting about domestic violence as well as different awareness events. And we have a Facebook and Instagram. And I believe many domestic violence programs are doing social media this month in particular because it's the safe way to bring awareness during COVID. In addition, on October 22nd is Wear Purple Day to Bring Awareness. And you can find information about that as well as on our Facebook page. Thank you.
Well, Shaleen, I want to thank you for your leadership as the Executive Director of the Northland Family Help Center. It's, Northland Family Help Center is an important part of our community. And as the Deputy Director Heather Marcy mentioned, the county has been a strong support of Northland Family Help Center as well as of the other entities that are joining us this morning from assisting with the Capitol Campaign many, several decades ago to just programming, et cetera. So we're pleased that you're part of the community as well as Sharon Manor and CASA, our entire, you know, justice system that you mentioned, from our Sheriff's Office to our County Attorney's Office, et cetera, who, you know, have a hand in building community and ensuring that everyone is safe and that justice is served. And so we appreciate everyone's part in making sure that these elements exist in our community. So thank you for letting us know what activities and awareness is planned for our community. And if you would be so kind as to perhaps send that over to us so that we can participate, whether that be wearing purple day or participating, you know, virtually or getting information out on our listservs or our social media, our websites, we'd be happy to do that to make sure that the entire community understands the importance of creating the awareness of domestic violence. So thank you for joining us this morning. And you're welcome to stay on as long as you'd like in our meeting. Otherwise, if you have other things that you need to move on, please feel free to do so. Let's now go to our, oh, I will ask actually the board members, Supervisor Babbitt or Supervisor Parks, if you wish to add anything, please do so. Supervisor Babbitt?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to, you know, every, every year we have the, you know, opportunity to just take a moment as a board and take stock of the work that gets done in our communities by organizations and entities on behalf of people who are worthy of and need our support and guidance and help as they navigate incredible challenges. And I just want to, you know, really thank the broader range of partners from federal law enforcement agencies, local law enforcement, nonprofit, Northland Family, Victim Witness, County Attorney's Office. I know that the Chair and I, and I believe Vice Chair Fowler, I currently sit on the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Board. And there is a potent reminder of what happens as we saw on the front page of the paper today, of what happens when healthy relationships aren't modeled and don't occur. And so I really want to thank you all for working on disrupting the often generational patterns of domestic violence and physical violence. And, and, you know, this will be my last one of these hearing directly from the partners who have just done such incredible, meaningful work. And I want to just thank you really, really profoundly on behalf of the people, the good men and women who you serve with services, and then on behalf of all the coworkers who get up and do a job every day that's really, really important. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Babbitt. Supervisor Parks, would you like to add anything?
I would, it's going to be pretty short. I really appreciate the work that the folks have done on domestic violence and especially for bringing this forward, Heather and all of our folks there at at this Domestic Violence Task Force. Thank you very much for doing what you're doing. Thank you for bringing this to the fore. Thank you for, this has long been a problem that was, that was hidden from view most of the time. And a lot of people have been hugely affected in their lives by domestic violence, by not only having it happen to themselves and their children, but it happens to the whole family. Domestic violence affects the whole family. And so I really appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate you bringing forward this proclamation. Thank you all.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. We are now going to go to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a consent agenda where we have several items that will be voted on one motion. These are items that are either administrative in nature or we've had a work session on them in the past. So we vote on multiple items with one motion. There are a couple of items that will be removed from the consent agenda to allow staff to make some comments. And also, board members may wish to remove some of the items from the agenda. So far, I have item number four and item number 17 that need to be considered separately. Are there any others Supervisor Babbitt or Supervisor Parks that you wish to remove from the consent agenda?
Not at this time, Madam Chair. You got item number four, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks, anything that you wish to remove? Maybe I'm muted.
Madam Chair, I think I'm good. I did have a question about item nine, but I talked with the County Manager and Michelle Axeland and Marie. And I've got them, I've got it pretty well figured out. So I'm okay with item nine and the rest of them. So thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Was there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item four and 17?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Babbitt, seconded by Supervisor Parks to approve the consent agenda minus items four and 17. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. We are now going to go to item number four. This is actually being considered separately because I believe supervisors wanted to add additional amounts to this item. And let's see. Lindsay Daly, I understand that Supervisor Ryan was thinking about adding to this. Do you, do you know if he was going to?
Yes, I received an email from Supervisor Ryan and he would like to contribute $3,000 from the District 3 CI funds.
Okay, great. We will add 3,000. Okay. And I will add funding as well from District 2. And I will do 3,500 from District 2. And then I did just want to let you know that I had requested from Mayor Evans that the City of Flagstaff consider assisting with this item as well. And I received an email yesterday from one of their deputy city managers, Shannon, who said that they will be considering that and that they should have an answer by next week, Wednesday, is what I understand. And so I think that that's, that's appropriate in terms of the city considering this. I thought that it would should be a community response. And so I don't, I think we can proceed with our allocations and then see what the city can, can provide. Yes, Supervisor Parks, and I'll call on County Manager Jane.
Okay, I would like to add $2,000 to that as well.
Okay. County Manager, that's District 4. County Manager Jane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So by my math, I show then a $12,000 total between the contribution of 3,500 from District 1, 3,000 from District 3, 3,500 from District 2, and then 2,000 from District 4. And I just wanted to let you know regarding the City of Flagstaff, I am scheduled to meet with the City Manager on Thursday morning. And this will be a topic for our discussion as well.
Okay, great. And just, I just want to read the email. And it is from Shannon Anderson. And it's, this request was considered by the city's budget team today, which was yesterday. City staff are going to work on identifying any CDBG or United Way funding that may be available and learning more about the code. Because there was some discussion about codes, bringing the water line, I think, up to code. This information should be ready for the budget team to consider further during their meeting next Monday on 10/12. If information is available sooner, the budget team will be able to reconvene on Wednesday this week. So that's the exact email. Okay, any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Item, yes Supervisor Babbitt?
Yeah, so Jimmy and our side, can you just keep us posted if the difference gets made up? And if the difference does not get made up, that would be information I would like to, you know, bring back. And we can figure out how we do that in finance, but I would like to fill that gap if it's not filled.
So noted. And I will follow up with all of you after my conversation with him Thursday morning and then keep you posted with the understanding that the intent is to be sure that their need is fulfilled. Thanks.
All right.
And just one more comment, if I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
You know, so I just want to, the Flagstaff Family Food Center has just been, just an unbelievable partner in this community. They are, in the best of times, an unbelievable partner who, as we just got to recognize, folks who work with different populations in the proclamation. This is just another one of these, you know, Herculean organizations that steps up 365 days a year to provide that little but unbelievably important support, not only to people, but to children and kids with their reading facilities there, 365 days a year. And their work can't, we can't say, I can't say thank you enough for the work. And they have just added unbelievable amount of work during this pandemic. And they just really, really should be recognized. So I really want to thank my colleagues for understanding that nothing happens there if they don't have a functioning water line, you know? And so just really, really appreciate their work. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Babbitt, yes. And again, the Coconino County has a long tradition of supporting the Flagstaff Family Food Center. I'm honored that they are, that their facility resides in District 2, my district. And it's, there's not a day that, that people are not served there. You're absolutely right. And they're actually running about $40,000 extra per month in terms of their expenses during this COVID time just because the demand for services is so great. And they've stepped up, as you, as you mentioned. It's been a heavy lift and, and they've, they've done it. And so, yeah, just an outstanding organization within our community that we can't thank enough. So with that, is there a motion? So with that, is there a motion to approve this item with the additions from the districts that were mentioned?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion. And I can go over those additions or do we have it in the record? Is that okay?
I'll go ahead and read it. That'd be great.
Okay, so I move that we approve item four and the total amount of funding is $12,000. And that includes 3, 3,500 from District Two, 3,500 from District One, 3,000 from District Three, and 2,000 from District Four. And that is my motion.
Yes, there are seconds?
Second, Madam Chair.
There's a motion, a second to approve this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously. Great, thank you so much. We'll now go to item number 17. And this is being considered separately because Chris Trussler needs to provide a few comments. And so Chris, I'll turn it over to you to speak to the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. So item 17 relates to critical improvements related to safety of our roadways and infrastructure. We may have been a little bit overly aggressive in identifying ways that we could save money in our budget this year due to expected decreases in revenue because of COVID and potentially expected a decrease in travel. But we've, we have realized savings in the previous fiscal year to, that, that we could use to address these projects that Public Works would like to undertake. Specifically, I need to make a modification to the Townsend Wynona Loop Road Safety Improvements Project. We had estimated that this project would cost approximately $10,000. And, and we have, we solicited bids and we have a bid for $14,170. So it increases the total capital budget adjustment that we're asking for to 228,476.37. This project is, is important in the, on the Loop Road in Townsend Wynona, especially in the, where the project happens there at Foster Road. That it's going to help create driver awareness. Where we've seen accidents, pretty serious accidents, and it's going to keep, it's going to help us from seeing potentially more accidents in this, in these areas of congestion and in areas where drivers will get confused or lose track of the speed, if you will. So we're asking for this budget adjustment fiscal year 21. Are there any questions, Madam Chair?
Chris, let me see if there are any questions from the board members. Board members, any questions of Chris at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Chris, anything else you want to add before we consider this item?
No ma'am.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. So is there a motion to approve item 17 in our consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
All right, there's a motion, a second to approve item 17. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris, for that information. Okay. We are now going to move on to our next item. And that item is item number 23. Is there a motion to resolve of the Board of Equalization?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Supervisor Babett seconded by Supervisor Parks. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, motion passes. We are now the Board of Equalization. And our attorney, Patrice Horstman, is here joining us. And Patrice, so I'll turn it over to you for any comments that need to be made to the board. And then we will welcome our hearing officer Chuck Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board of Equalization, as you know, you have before you a recommendation from your duly appointed hearing officer who heard the appeals to the Board of Equalization on behalf of the board and has rendered a decision. And you do have an extensive master log setting forth those decisions. It is now your time to review your hearing officer's decision. To my knowledge, and of course I haven't, maybe Mr. Peterson knows, but at this point I do not see that there's any of the petitioners that are electing to bring any possible appeal to the board or review to the board. And as you know, if there is, your review of the hearing officer's decision is limited. You will uphold the decision unless there is substantial, unless there is no substantiated evidence that was presented to your hearing officer, or unless there is a violation of Arizona law. Other than that, you will not substitute your judgment for that of your duly appointed hearing officer. So at this time, if there are no individuals that are wanting to present a review to the board, it is set forth as a consent agenda item. So at this point, Madam Chair, you may want to hear from your hearing officer to see if, if he has anything to add.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me ask our clerk Lindsay Daly if she has anything that she would like to add in terms of introduction to this item or about this item. Lindsay?
Thank you, Chair Turelata and Supervisors. Good morning. Each year the assessor sends out notice of value cards to all the property owners. And the cases you see before you are those that petitioned to the assessor's office and then had a decision from the assessor and wasn't satisfied with that decision, so appealed to the Board of Equalization. And this year we had six petitioners, which included a total of 28 parcels among them. And just briefly looking at our protest log, we had hearings on September 9th and September 15th. All of the petitioners participated in those hearings. But looking at our, our protest log, for Mr. Wallace and Mr. Jacks, the full cash value was reduced. And then for the two parcels under ownership of Luke Investors, those were a no change just from what the assessor level decision was. So the assessor already had reduced it during their protest. And then for the Forest Highland Parcels, those all had a stipulation agreement with the assessor's office prior to the Board of Equalization hearing. So those were worked out where classification were changed and some of the values of the parcels were reduced. For the Dillard's parcel, the hearing's decision was related to Clear Creek, Creek 820, which included the McCary and Strata Trust parcels. The classification was not changed on the Clear Creek 820 parcels, but the classification was changed for the Strata Trust and McCary parcel, which also reduced the value for those parcels. So the hearing or the notice of decision of the hearing officer was mailed out to all the petitioners. And they were also made aware that if they aren't satisfied, they can still have the opportunity to appeal with the tax court or to file with the tax court. Thank you.
Thank you Clerk Daly. Appreciate the overview. And as I mentioned, we do have hearing officer Chuck Johnson, who is on, who is attendant, who's in attendance at this meeting. And so, Mr. Johnson, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So let me, let me ask if there are any questions at this time, either of our attorney or of Clerk Daly. Okay, seen none. Then I will just, for the record, ask if there are any petitioners present who would like to address the board on this item. Okay, and let me just verify that there is no one who has indicated in writing through the question, answer, or the chat that they wish to participate. And there are none. So thank you very much. And so we now need to move forward with a motion. And is there a motion to accept the hearing officer's recommendation?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Resolution 2020-02 from the Board of Equalization and accept the hearing officer's recommendation. All procedures, where there were no procedural flaws in any of the conversation that had been laid before the board. And so I will make that motion, which includes for property valuation for tax year 2021. And the hearings were conducted September 9th and September 15th of this year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. There's a second by, first of all, the motion was made by Director Babett, seconded by Director Parks. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
Clear second, thank you. There's a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously. Unanimously, is there a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously. So we are now the Flood Control District Board of Directors. We have one item on our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda of the Flood Control District?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion made by Supervisor, excuse me, Director Parks, seconded by Director Babett. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. Now, we need to resolve as the Board of Supervisors. There a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, we are now the Board of Supervisors. This next item is a public hearing. And after the staff presentation, I will open the public hearing and ask for comments from the board. And again, Mr. Peterson, will you just let people who are watching know how to indicate that they wish to participate in the public hearing of item 25?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, if you do wish to indicate that you want to speak during the public hearing, simply raise your hand in the participant screen or on the bottom of your screen, or you can enter a note in the Q and A. Just please let us know your name and that you wish to speak and we'll elevate you when the time comes for public comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I will turn this item over to Siri Mulaney, who is our Finance Director. She will give detail on this item and the public hearing. Siri?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This item is to acknowledge comments received during the 45-day comment period related to the proposed fiscal year 21 use of Title III funds under Secure Rural Schools Act funding. The comment period was advertised per the requirements of the act. And it was held from August 12th through September 25th. And it was to advertise the use of Title III towards patrol of federal lands in the amount of $86,536 in search and rescue on federal lands of $93,747. There were no comments received during the comment period.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Siri at this time? Okay, hearing none. Then I am going to open the public hearing. And again, whoever, when you wish to indicate, when you indicate that you wish to speak, please state your name and your place of residence. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, the Title III projects under the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act? Okay, I'll give it just a few seconds and I will see if there's anybody who's indicated in writing that they wish to speak.
Madam Chair, we have none at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any questions, or we are prepared to have a motion on this item. Any questions? Okay Supervisor Parks, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, right now we're having a lot of action by the Sheriff's Department in, in area that this, this would cover and this would, this, this money would go, is going to go to a very positive cause. The search and rescue operations, they, they help to alleviate the, the, the amount of time that the actual sheriff's deputies have to do the work that, that they do. You know, last year we had a fatality, a quadruple fatality actually on the rim road with a, with an ATV, not an ATV, UTV that missed a turn on the rim road and, and four young men were, were killed. They went over the rim and they died in Gila County. The search and rescue folks were the ones that were employed to go down there and retrieve the bodies. And, and that saved a lot of work for the Sheriff's Department, who were there present also. But this is very necessary as, as search and rescue, they do serve a very positive role in, in Coquigny County, in, in, in our forest areas. So I wanted to just make that comment. And with that, I, if there are no more comments, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you Supervisor Parks. This is a, there's a motion to approve the item. We're actually, we are approving, we reviewed the comments received. And so we are approving that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to make a couple of comments. And yes, you're absolutely right. This is $180,000, $180, $283 that would be used to support Flagstaff Patrol, patrol on federal lands in Coquigny County, as well as to support search and rescue on federal lands in Coquigny County. And we are very fortunate in Coquigny County to have federal land that people from far and wide like to visit and recreate on. And with that, then there's also incidents that happen, such as getting lost or accidents and require for those types of operations to be conducted on federal land. That's why this Board of Supervisors has a very strong and long history spanning over a couple of decades of vigorously advocating for the reauthorization and funding of secure rural schools. You will find that that's been on our legislative agenda for years. And the Board of Supervisors, every single time when it's up for reauthorization, has met and advocated with members of our congressional delegation to ensure that secure rural schools is reauthorized. Because not only does this money go for these types of of operations, which is patrol and search and rescue on federal lands, it also, funding also goes to support schools. And a portion of it goes also for roads. And so And so I for one have been very proud to be able to testify in Congress on this item. As well as over the past 24 years of advocating vigorously for this item. With the National Association of Counties and with members of Congress. And so it's great to be able to have this funding to support these efforts. So all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously. Okay, now we are going to go on to our discussion and possible action items. This item that we have on number 26 is discussion update and possible direction to staff. Regarding the potential legislative items for our County Supervisors Association Legislative Summit. As well as any other state or federal legislative or administrative matters. Our Public Affairs Director Eric Peterson will be presenting this item. Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. I, I think we get the record in Public Affairs for always giving you the longest reoccurring titles of agenda items. Glad to be here today, spend time before we break for lunch to talk about the CSA Legislative Summit, which will be October 21st through the 23rd. This is our board meeting for our opportunity to connect with each of us and with you to talk about the legislative submissions from other counties. And also the CSA legislative priorities. So with me today are Claire Harper and Julian Wolfe, who have been part of my team. That we have been working together on this Government Affairs Project and to bring you this update. So I'm going to quick share my screen so that everyone who is with us can, can follow along. This is the, as you can see on the screen, is the, the legislative items from CSA. Many of you on the board will recognize this. We're also working from our binder today. So if you have your binder with you, I encourage you to open it where you're at, but we'll walk through these items. As we have done in the past, the, the blue sheets are our first draft of items. That we here at Coconino County in Public Affairs have put together for you in the binder. Obviously, we will continue to make updates and as we head towards a virtual summit, again, October 21st. We will get you an update in a different color of those sheets as we update our talking points and items. As counties consider whether or not to continue with bringing these items forward. So I just want to, not to belabor time, we'll start in what is tab three on your binder. And then also, as you can see in my cursor, we're starting with the CSA Coalition Priorities. So Madam Chair, if you want, I think I'll walk through and then I'll pause and see if there's questions, if that works for you in sort of our normal roundtable manner. The first two items here, the first two bullets from Coalition Priorities, these are defensive lobbying items. Obviously, with the economic downturn related to the COVID-19 pandemic, counties are prepared and have a lived history of understanding. The state coming after funding that is available to counties or other policy items that may adversely impact the nature of counties. So we did not prepare any talking points or any items. This is simply you, as the board members, will be asked in mass with the CSA Board to adopt authorization for CSA. To engage legislators, legislation and proposals that adversely impact on the county resources and authorities. And also to prevent additional cost shifts. It's completely defensive. Don't expect much conversation at CSA. I just wanted to highlight what that means. I'll pause there before we move to the next item.
Any questions for Eric on this? Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. The next item is the eliminate mandate payments to ADJC, which is the hardest acronym for me to say. This is tab number four in your binder. This is the historic payment that still has Maricopa and Pima contributing. To pay the state cost to the Arizona Division of Juvenile Corrections. And so that, this again would remain a CSA priority to remove those two counties from that payment. And require the state to pay that from the general fund. We were removed back in 2019. And so the Maricopa and Pima have been left in, and of course, the skinny budget this year has left them in as well. So that is what this proposal is. I'll stop there.
Questions for Eric? Okay, go ahead, Eric.
The next item is about ALTEX, which is the Arizona Long Term Care System. Of course, this used to be a county operation. It was then taken over by the state and is remained as a hybrid funding model. And that is the concern here is that growth is causing an increase in a driver on much of our budget. It is one of the three items that our Public Health Service District funding totally goes to pay for in terms of the state mandate. The ALTEX budget request from Access increases the county costs collectively across all 15 counties by $14 million. Just so you're aware, that is simply the budget request. That does not include a provider rate increase, which the legislature can do. Which also drives up costs. So CSA has put together a resolution, which you see in your binder as well. Very similar to last year, you know, that we, the CSA wants to have any input on the drivers of those cost increases. And it allows CSA to engage sort of the unknown of what's going to happen with ALTEX as we move into the legislative session.
Any questions regarding ALTEX? And obviously, this is something we've been addressing for quite some time. So I don't think it's any, anything different than in the past of us trying to control our costs.
That's correct, yes. And those circuit breakers we outlined on your blue sheets are very important for us as a county. They do help us. So we want to be tentative walking into that space. We, we obviously need to control costs, but also understand that. If the system gets reopened in some way for consideration, we need to look specifically at our Coconino County position. Even within the county coalition on, on the issues of ALTEX, so.
Great, thank you, Eric. Go ahead.
Tab six, and the next item is our, our ongoing reoccurring item on transportation and protecting HERF from sweeps or raids. The CSA has put together a draft resolution calling for the increased investment in transportation infrastructure. And also tax parity, which have been big pieces of what has been Representative Campbell's past bills on calling for increased funding. But also included in that, that we, you know, we don't want any degradation or sweeping of HERF. Which has been a common action in economic downturn times, that we would remain opposed to such actions such as that. I know Supervisor Ryan, who's not with us today, but of course is the RTAC Chairman, this is an incredibly important item for that coalition. Hence the resolution, rather than trying to run a bill to join a coalition around that issue. I'll just pause there.
Any questions regarding this item? Go ahead, Eric.
Okay. The next item is PSPRS. We have had lots of conversations about this. And I'll just point out, as you see on the screen, we do have an excise tax possibility, a separate legislative proposal, number seven, from La Paz County. And that is unrelated to the resolution that has been provided by CSA. Obviously, lots of conversations on what the next step forward is. PSPRS essentially what many folks, what CSA has been talking with and with managers. Certainly invite management or finance if they have opinions to chime in. But has been really talking about doing much what like the city of Flagstaff did. And that is in a time of what I will call cheap money, paying down that debt and that unfunded liability right up from the front end. And avoid the longer term backend payments on those issues. This resolution urges PSPRS to move in that direction, restraint from the governor and legislature on other cost increases that will affect us. And then there's a third bullet in the resolve that really relates to the La Paz County excise tax. The, the potential for an additional tax to pay down PSPRS. That should the CSA Board do, that would be incorporated into the resolution about asking for an additional revenue stream. To help pay down that unfunded liability. Again, I think there are two questions there. One, I think we certainly should support the resolution. But then really this question about what is the, the tax availability of the legislature and the willingness of a legislature. Especially with the unknowns to adopt such a tax and what is our plan forward and what, what do we want to put CSA capacity behind to pass? So there's a lot in that statement, but I will stop there and we can engage on questions as you wish.
Thank you. Any questions for Eric on this item?
Just a comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Supervisor Babbitt.
So, you know, we've always been talking about, Coconino has the highest, or I should say, the lowest kind of. Unfunded proportion of PSPRS out of all the counties, I believe. And, and we've always been talking about how we don't want to be penalized for our good behavior. For our good financial decisions. And the excise tax piece, I, you know, is, I want to be cautious with. Because we are then giving flexibility that really isn't relational to us, and I want that flexibility. But I, I want to be careful, I want to be careful that, you know, we don't put all our flexibility. And desire to have local control around revenues be limited to the bandwidth of something. We don't have a lot of unfunded liability to it, if that's making sense to you. And, and so, you know, I, it just gets, it gets that point of, I don't want to be penalized for making good decisions. And, and so, you know, I, I think it is important. I think it's important that we don't put all our county flexibility for revenue in the PSPRS discussion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just following Supervisor Babbitt, I honestly, in our conversations as county lobbyists, this, the other tax proposals. I am not sure how much desire there is from CSA, from the members, what I'm hearing, to take up a lot of tax proposals this year. You've already seen a couple of them get pulled off of this list. And so I do think that there is some of that concern, but also, yeah, if we create very dedicated uses of revenue. We've, we've used a lot of political capital for revenue that is very constrained without necessarily meeting the local need and demand. Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a feather in our cap. I just, once again, Coconino County leads the way. What you see is next broadband infrastructure, that's tab number nine in your binder. I really do want to applaud all of us here in our work on broadband. CSA has recognized that broadband is an incredibly important issue for the entire state. COVID-19 has made that perfectly aware. Even our internet here has been cutting in and out a little bit. But they have elevated the resolution that we created for broadband funding and submitted into a CSA legislative priority. They asked if we would be okay with that. I certainly knew that we would be. And so this is becoming a statewide priority issue. It still does the thing that we had promoted to CSA from the very beginning, and that is first and middle mile broadband expansion. Putting state funding into that and leveraging further federal funding. First and middle mile are the idea of smart highway corridors, which the governor has started, Highway 17, Highway 40, I-19 and others. Middle mile is that conversation that Matt Fowler is leading so much on with our broadband study on areas like 89 to the Utah border, 160. And such, those kinds of middle miles. And then really hoping that with the kind of infrastructure built out, that the marketplace will come in in the way that it should. And we hope to have it accelerate its investment into the last mile to make sure that we're seeing connection, connection into homes. For this virtual world that we are in. So that is, the broadband resolution was originally ours. CSA elevated it with our permission to become a CSA legislative priority for the statewide concern.
Any questions on this one or comments?
Good job.
Yeah.
That's my comment.
Thank you. Next.
To have to fight on, so. And then the last item is flexibility language. CSA would adopt, is asking to adopt the exact same flexibility language as we have in the past, 1.25 million to the general fund. We have used that this year, as we have in the past. No changes are proposed. I've not heard from any county willing or desiring to change it. I would encourage us not to get into the business of changing it. At the summit, we certainly can flex if there is a different legislature, different composure that maybe look at that. We can, you know, change courses, but at this point, I would encourage us to be careful and not lose the ability where we sit in this, in this year right now.
Absolutely. Questions or comments? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the next five are all items. So now we are into the county submitted items. I, I'm going to bucket these together. You can see CSA assorted these by issue areas. Through items one through five, which are tab 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 in your binders, all were previously adopted. So I'm going to just give you the general overview of them and then we can talk about all five specifically if you wish. We've done, we've talked about these for many years, most of them. The first is our item along with Yavapai County and Assessor Ruiz is taking, the assessors are taking this item up as well to ACO. This is the bill we ran last year on short-term rentals about the commercial definition and property tax parity. With a residential property tax owner. So SB 1490 last year did pass the Senate in a bipartisan fashion. And the item here is simply to reintroduce the same bill. CSA would be a lead on that along with ACO, working with the assessors, recognizing it's a, an impact to our communities. And in the world of assessment. So that's number one. Number two is a piece of what we did last year. Yavapai County has resubmitted. And this is really the local preemption that the state put on us about three years ago on short-term rentals. Where we are preempted from regulating short-term rentals, Airbnbs. In the last session, the League of Cities and Towns was full steam ahead on trying to get this repealed. They have backed away from that. CSA connected with Yavapai County and with us as we proposed this last year. And we really felt a resolution was the right path, rather than trying to get a specific bill ran on this. There is likely to be a bill, but this allows CSA the flexibility to make sure to get behind a bill. And really see if it's got some legs and, and work that way. So it's, it's the same issue as last year, just simply done as a resolution rather than as a separate bill. The third item is related as well, and this is transient lodging. Santa Cruz and Yavapai have submitted this again. Allowing us as counties to put a tax in on transient lodging in the unincorporated areas. It's very specific in that regard due to complaints from the cities and towns. And so that is the measure before, before you, very similar to last year as well. And I'll just note that there, again, taxing the capacity, this bill had a hard time getting a sponsor in the last session. It may certainly get a sponsor in this session. I do not want us to overthink expectations that we're going to see two-thirds votes in both houses. To put on an Airbnb tax. So I just want you to be aware. Number four is also previously adopted. This is the Resources for Juvenile Dependency. This is binder tab 13. Providing fiscal resources to counties for juvenile dependency for indigenous defenses. And so this item has come back again, Mojave and Yavapai Counties. And then number five from Yavapai County is the dangerous incompetent and not restorable. We discussed this last year. Again, County Attorney Ring tried to give us some very, last year's numbers, less than five people. Three people, excuse me, in the last five years in this category. Bigger counties certainly see an issue here. Trying to provide for a better process for these folks. So those are ones we have done before. I'll stop there. I know there's a lot of items in there, but I just wanted to run through them since we've talked about these many years in a row.
Thank you, Eric. Yes, and obviously something, some of these, we've been trying to get passed for quite some time. And so let me see if there are any questions or comments from the board. Okay, I don't hear any, so go ahead.
All right. Now we're on to new measures here, starting at number six. This first one is from Penal County about write-in candidates. It's binder tab 15. Essentially, candidates for office are required to have a residency. If you are a nominated candidate for office, excuse me, at least prior, 120 days prior to filing your papers. However, write-in candidates really can get down to about a 40-day residency requirement. Penal County has brought this issue up as an issue of concern. I believe there was a case that happened down there. I'm not exactly sure which office. But obviously, you know, the old word carpet bagging, people just move in and then, you know, can file much quicker. Rather than what is on the normal process and requirements for those seeking a party nomination. We, we have talked about this issue, so this would require that parity of 120 days residency prior to filing the papers. We have talked about this as the group of lobbyists for the county and do agree that this is much more in the. this is much more in the wheelhouse of the ACO Election Directors and Recorders Group, and that this should be referred there. Penal County has not yet pulled it, but they are considering that. But I do, if it does reach the, the CSA summit, with really a concern for a lot of need for defensive lobbying, this is a kind of bill that ACO would be much better suited to run from their area of expertise moving forward in the session. I'll take questions.
No questions, just that I agree 100% with you that I think ACO would be the right organization to run this, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Number seven, we have just briefly touched on already, but this is a fiscal measure from La Paz County. We, it's a little bit modified, given where PSPRS is at, but essentially, it's the same issue they have run before, asking for a specific excise tax to go to PSPRS unfunded liability. Again, you know, I think the resolution is more nimble. It puts us in the area of where we can be, but there, I don't know that there's going to be much appetite to pass this. Supervisor Babbitt's concerns that you've heard, La Paz may pull this if the resolution, you know, is passed and such. We, we just simply don't know yet. I know managers meet this Friday, and they'll be having some further conversation, but I wanted to put it on your radar about this half, half percent excise tax for unfunded liability or to pay down bonds, i.e. the borrowing piece like City of Flagstaff did. But again, it's a very dedicated funding stream and a dedicated use with a lack of flexibility for other further needs that may come up for the county.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
All right. Now we move into human resources, a couple items here. This is number eight to nine on the CSA packet that'll start in binder tab 17. This is the, probably the most interesting one of the, of the cycle for us from Penal County. It's in relation to car allowances. Down there, the Penal County Board has sent this forward. And I'll just be very candid, that Supervisor Rio said this should never have come forward, but, so you're aware, there was a division on their board, but it was sent forward to allow, as a method of compensation, rather than mileage reimbursement or use of a pool vehicle, that supervisors would receive a car allowance. Now, this does have obviously tax implications as well, you know, with your, how much compensation a car allowance is, does play into federal tax law, but then also, this is theoretically a compensation change. While it is a car allowance, it would require the legislature to act, grant counties the permission to do the car allowance. There is conversation in Penal about whether or not this will be presented, but as of right now, it is still on the list. So it does not specify what amount of car allowance. It just simply allows for local discretion and control in that area. So I'll stop there, and we can dive in.
I, I just have a comment.
Sure, go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
I mean, I just am kind of, I don't know, I'm just amazed that this makes it this far. I mean, I, you know, I just, I just think, I look in the, I'm sorry, I don't, and I don't mean to diminish, I, maybe I don't understand the totality of the issues in Penal County, but we live in a pretty darn big county too, and we, with no financials behind it and no details, it just, I don't really understand it. But anyway, that's just my comment, and we can get some text tone and, and context from our colleagues from Penal County, I'm sure.
Yeah, again, I think it was a divided issue there as well. I, I think it was 3-2 coming to CSA, but there is, someone's got a burr under their saddle about having to fill out the mileage forms, from what I understand, so.
No, I know, that's what I was going to say, being as how, right now, I mean, there is a process. It's reimbursement of mileage, and so I just, I, I don't know, yeah, I don't, this is, to me seems like our advocacy capital could be used in many better places and with issues that are more meaningful, in my opinion, as well. So, thank you for that. We'll just see if this even makes it past the first hour of discussion, right?
Right. We'll see if we even have it on the list when we get the next revision, so.
Right.
The, the next HR matter is military leave pay, and this is binder tab 18. So right now, those members who are in the National Guard or Reserve and have to take a leave of absence, you know, obviously, our law permits that. They are entitled, without a loss of pay or an efficiency rating, for up to 30 days in two consecutive years. The relevant statute was changed in 2018 by a bill by Representative Shope to define day. When we say day, it's a shift of work. It is not a true calendar day. And so, HR, our HR department supports this change, because when you, when you look at a shift of work, what is that? If there are two shifts of work within what we would consider a day, that is now two days and such, if you think of a person who is double-shifted in any way or such. So, Penal County is asking to remove that definition of the day, to go back to the status quo, that a day is a day. No funny business about what that definition is. I shouldn't call it funny business, I'm sorry, that's a misrepresentation, but essentially, the idea of a day is a day. Wednesday is a day, Tuesday is a day, and that we, HR, our county HR would like to go back to that as well, does support this. So everyone would be, if there are on a leave of absence, would be placed on a schedule of five consecutive eight-hour working days, you know, as on leave and such. So this is a late addition, came in late, well after the deadline, but Penal County, I think, is dealing with a couple issues down there where this has come up. And I just want to point out that the 2018 law that changed from day to shift of work, this new definition we are dealing with, was endorsed by law enforcement and the firefighters. So just to give you the full scope of the background.
So Eric, just to make sure I understand it, so if somebody works a shift that crosses two days, so let's say 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, something like that, the following day, was that then regarded as two days? Then I'm just, I'm sorry, I don't think I fully understand this.
So, so the ultimate effect of the 2018 law going to shift of work was they increased the amount of leave paid to the employee. And so that, so if you look at the CSA document, the white document, right after our blue, what Penal County used to do was provide 240 hours of leave within a two-hour period for those, those persons in the military that were eligible for this leave when on active duty. That definition of a day as a shift of work increased that total hours, because now every shift would be encompassed in there. From our application, if this were to pass Supervisor Archuleta, I think to completely answer the question, that a, a shift across a day, so if you worked Tuesday late at night into Wednesday early in the morning, you would still be in a day, the shift of work, the idea of the eight-hour workday is essentially what we, what we would be going back to. So I think the ultimate application, to be very clear, is it is, it is good for the county, it is good for the bottom line of the county, being fair and equitable to those members who would have that ability to take that leave and to serve our country and our state in that matter, but also recognize the fiscal responsibility of not over-giving them leave for those, those shifts that would cross, you know, a multiple shift regard in that way. So it's, it's ultimately calculated by how many hours of leave are we going to put in a bank for this person to draw down, from what I understand by the HR teams.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
I expect this one to be, be lots of conversation as people try to figure out the shift in the day, just as we sort of walk through, so. All right. Madam Chair, I'll move on then, if I'm not hearing anyone pop in. The next item is item 10 on the CSA list, it's binder tab 19. This is a large general fund impact. While we may all really support this, I don't know how much legs it will ever have in the current atmosphere, but essentially, Santa Cruz County is asking CSA to endorse and run a bill that would entirely remove the county costs for the court system and move that wholly into a state system. We are a hybrid funded system where the county is paying, the state owns the court system, it's a state function as it's recognized in almost every county, every state, excuse me. We have a hybrid system of funding where county revenues and state revenues are funded into the court system. This is asking the courts, AOC, the legislature, to appoint, excuse me, to appropriate general fund to wholly take that cost. It is estimated that that would be about 240 million, excuse me, 240 million that the state would have to pick up to cover the counties, and then potentially, there's another 21 million of blended local and federal funding that may have to be covered. So there's, there is a lot of funding in there that would have to be picked up by the state to accomplish this. I, I think all of us at some point would like to see the state fund its whole court system. I certainly would, but that's an awfully big general fund bill in this day and age, so I don't know that it has much, much viability.
Questions on this item? Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. The next item, Penal County, again, this is agricultural composting. This is not an issue we deal with here, but certainly down in the large dairies and the large feedlot industries, they do. This is methane digesting, so this is a collection of bovine or cattle waste, and then you, you put it into a digester to create, use the methane gas to create power. The solids can be used as a fertilizer or, or other type of soil renewal. Digestors and this kind of composting have found a loophole to essentially get around local zoning and place them in areas that some Penal County residents and Penal County officials are not, are not keen on seeing them, so they would like to close that loophole and make sure that these installations are required to comply with local zoning and local planning regulations of the county. This are almost all in unincorporated areas in Penal County. It's an issue that, as far as we found, obviously, to the south, they're dealing much more with being a cattle grazing and ranching type of atmosphere. We're not seeing many folks, if any, collecting waste up here to do composting other than small backyard or very small piles, so no one, none that we are aware of through community development causing any issues in our neck of the woods up here in northern Arizona.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item is item 12 on the CSA list, binder tab 21. You'll remember this from two years ago at our CSA Legislative Summit in Yuma County, the great debate over junk vehicles and how we remove them. This is Yavapai County bringing this bill back. It is, is pulled back a little bit from that version that we first had two years ago, and really, this is about allowing counties to, during an abatement process, require the removal and, and also remove junk vehicles that are left on property. They are, in general, accounting, community development and others have supported this. I believe two years ago, we did support this item at the summit in Yuma. It was a bill, it did not pass, and so this has been resubmitted by Yavapai County this year, and you'll see their draft proposal that Jack Fields has put together in your binder as well. And I'll stop and ask for any questions.
Board members, any questions at this time? Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is from Navajo County, something the county manager is very familiar with, and this is about an elected improvement district board. Essentially, this is a, an issue within Navajo County that would require a state law change. In looking at this provision, we, we do encourage you to support it. There's one change that we should see, and I'll get into that. The, there is a district, the White Mountain Lakes County Recreation Improvement District is a district that is currently a district board of the Board of Supervisors. Navajo County would like to have this board be a board elected by members, qualified electors of the district. They have proposed a board of not less than three, no more than five, so you get to, you know, the, the Board of Supervisors and the district could elect three to five. That is our proposed change, and it's just quite simply a very practical one. A board of five members allows for, obviously, a couple people to get together. This is a community, so that, so we don't have open meeting law violations happening all the time, and also simply, as people may move or, or pass on in life, that there is not, less churn with five members likely, and that the board can continue to meet and operate. Almost all county improvement districts are, are run by the Board of Supervisors unless authorized by the statute. This one is one that exists outside of that statute, and so the need is to allow for statute to change, to allow that elected district board, and that is what Navajo County is seeking again. We, we would fully endorse that, and we don't think it's, it's a great change, and obviously, you know, regardless of who's in the legislature or what party's in control, you know, Navajo County would have good representation, be able to help CSA make a relatively small change.
Questions on this item? Okay, hearing none, go ahead, Eric.
All right. And then our last two items, Madam Chair, are water items. These come from Mojave County, both of them, and they are repeats of last year's bills. There are two of them, so number 14, which is binder tab 23, is about essentially a change in the law. Legislation from 2020 did not pass. COVID obviously short-circuited much of the cycle, but allows to consider prospective groundwater review instead of a retrospective nature of the review. And I don't have the bill number in front of me, I apologize, we'll look it up here, but this is about agricultural use of water and whether or not to look back at past usage or look forward at potential usage and what that will do on the, in the irrigation non-expansion areas as, as we look at that. So ADWR has very particular things they have to look at retrospectively, but they cannot look forward prospectively, and that's what this bill would change to allow that prospective review.
Questions on this item? Comments? Go ahead, Eric.
All right, and then, and the next item, that is groundwater basins. This bill is the big bill that we, we talked about last year in terms of water with Mojave County. They are outside of an active management area, and it authorizes some local control to designate discrete groundwater basins as an RMA, a rural management area, if they meet some criteria. They go through membership requirements. This bill was 2896, House Bill, last year. The bill did not pass, and so the Mojave County is asking CSA to endorse and push forward on this version of the bill this year, and so that is what is before you for that consideration.
Questions on this item?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So Eric, you know, this is, as we talked, I know I signed on last year in support of this bill, and, and not because it was the, the, at least from my perspective, had everything in it that it needed to have, but it was a, it is an incredibly important opening of a window for a conversation. And so I'm just wondering, in your conversations with Craig or CSA or in Mojave County, you know, this is one that I think should really have a kind of specific stakeholder task force type approach to this. These are very, very complex issues with really big, big repercussions that I think I'm really supportive of this conversation moving forward, but I'm just wondering if there's any conversation of, of, you know, running this in parallel with some type of a focus-defined stakeholder slash legislative study group to get this right?
Great, great, yeah, great question Supervisor. Sorry, Madam Chair, Madam Chair Supervisors. There are, there's been a coalition, obviously, this bill, last session, there was coalition discussions that happened around this bill that CSA was a part of. To my knowledge, there has been no conversation about a special legislative committee or task force or work group, but I don't think that that's off the table, especially given the unknown of what the legislature's composition is in the next go-around. I think it's, it's something that I will note for Julian and Clarida to add as, as a potential addition to this, is really direction to CSA to try to engage in that kind of conversation and to really flesh it out. I have not got anything back from Craig that it's happening, but I don't think it's off the table.
All right.
Any other comments? Okay, go ahead.
So Madam Chair, the, the last thing, and this is not a CSA item, but tab 25. does have all the ACO proposals in it. I will not go through all of them. This is obviously very subject to change. Their process will not really come to fruition until December. But there's a couple of things I want to highlight. There is a, a county elected official salary bill, again, being considered by ACO. They haven't agreed to take it up yet, but it is being considered. And so that is item number one on, on tab 25 that you see there. Just want to add that there is also a conversation about the clerks of court going through a statutory change to align their salaries through the AOC process on judge salaries and to avoid the need for legislative review and change of the clerk of court salary. So that is a conversation ongoing. Again, none of these are adopted. These are all proposals and drafts, are just making you aware. And then I do want to bring up that we have had a lot of conversation with the treasurer about issues of the property tax deferral. That is an item 19, the ACO, the property tax deferral statute cleanup, they called it. That is the issue that the treasurer has been working on very specifically. And essentially is about, you know, for income deferral of property taxes is like a reverse mortgage in a, in a lot of ways. If you cannot, if you meet certain requirements, you have to apply by July 1, you are approved for the deferral. The state treasurer, the county treasurer use pooled revenues and funds available to essentially pay the taxing districts, also the county special districts. And then the title, the deed to that property would have a lien, like a reverse mortgage for those taxes. You could pay it off, or you could wait until you sell the property. And then of course, then the, that, the funding, the loan that was given is reimbursed. There is, that tax deferral statute is very tight, and they are looking to open it up, especially in the light of COVID. It may be permanent, it may just be for some time. But that's what the treasurers are looking at, so we'll keep you advised. Chris Pasters on my team is working on the housing task force and is connecting with the treasurer often. I meet with her weekly, so you're aware. And then number 20 is the item with the assessors, which is item number one at CSA, the commercial real estate definition for those certain Airbnbs on residential property for taxpayer purposes.
So Eric, if it pooled, then on number 19, the property tax deferral statute. So if it's pooled, then does it, what, what I guess my question would be that, that deferral and its impact to county collections and what we collect for other of the other jurisdictions, right? The other taxing entities. And so, um, you know, the impact that it has on a certain county. So is, is that why it's pooled? I mean, you know, if you have one third of taxpayers that defer, right? And then it's deferred until the property is, is sold.
So let me explain what I meant by pooled there, Madam Chair, I apologize. So the program works right now that by July 1, an eligible person must apply. There's an income eligibility, an age eligibility, property type eligibility. They apply for the program and are approved. The pooled is pooled funds that either the state has at the state treasurer's office or our county treasurer has investments, revenues, funds that we have. And essentially, the state or the county are acting as a bank, and they are loaning to that applicant, if they're approved, the amount of their taxes. And that all the districts are paid there. So there is no effect to the county, the special districts, the school districts, they get the revenue. The issue is if the county or the state are doing that, those pooled funds are drawn down and there's an IOU, the lien on the property. So there is an effect on that side. The county treasurer, from our conversations, doesn't seem to think that would be a big effect on our pooled funds. But obviously, the state would have a larger pool to draw down that could be in there. I think there's still some of those key points in their, their conversations they're working through about is this only the state funds? Or do they use county funds? And they're not yet finalized on those items. However, the tax revenues for, that are owed to a district or county, any jurisdiction would be paid. The effect on the government would be less cash in the bank on the backside because of the IOU there for that, for that deferment.
Sure, sure. And could you just give us some information on what the, what, what can consider the eligibility
Yes, we will.
Income and property value limits, what that expansion will, would look like?
Absolutely.
Okay, appreciate.
And I, just so you know, Treasurer Benatar, I think once this is closer to finalized, would probably like to come and address a roundtable just to make you all aware. Because obviously, if ACO is going to run this bill, it will get, and CSA is already at the table. We're talking in a coalition sense on this bill because there are other organizations outside the state that are pushing for a wholesale change of how the tax lien foreclosure issues are done in, in Arizona. And they, they call it equity theft, and it has caused a whole series of issues and that would have a radical impact on county operations and finances.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments about any of the items? Did you have something else, Eric, on this?
Madam Chair, I don't take any thoughts and feedback now or at any time before CSA will get you revisions to this, some flesh out some talking points. We've heard some great feedback today on, you know, concurrence with some of our ideas and also some other new things that have been brought up and pull those forward to help give you all some very good materials. It will be interesting at summit this year, obviously, we're going to be virtual, so we're not all around the same table. So we'll do our best to have the group text, you know, ready and available and hear from you on, you know, all the issues that we have and manage that process, so.
Okay, thank you. So just one item I was going to bring up in regards to county item number 15 submitted by Mojave County, the rural management areas. So last week at the, the Coconial Plateau Water Advisory Council, there was a presentation by ADWR and obviously, there is a statute that exists that allows for county board of supervisors to take to election by a vote establishing the establishment of an AMA. And so I actually had not heard of that statute. And so I just wanted to, to bring that to your attention, that I don't know how many counties or board of supervisors are actually utilizing that statute that exists.
A great question, Madam Chair. I have not heard of any, I will look for it. I see Joanne popping on, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just, I wanted to let you know that I did request that presentation from Ron Doba. It was a presentation by Ken Slawinski, who's chief counsel for ADWR. So when I received that from Ron, forwarded out to the board. But it was, it was a very, it was well done and an excellent presentation.
Very informative, and I wanted to share that with all of the board members and with others because it likely is a very little, little known statute that exists. And so it's, it's just, it's a tool in the toolbox that I'm not sure counties in Arizona understand they have.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, Eric, thank you so much for your work. Let me see if there's questions or comments overall or about a particular item that now has been thought of Supervisor Babbitt?
Yeah, thanks. So Eric, I wanted to ask you about, so is, is there, I think it would be helpful for us to understand what, you know, because on these legislative, these summits, there is a lot of sitting around the table in kind of quiet side conversation about the trajectory of conversations. And I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity that final morning? Yeah, I think, don't we do the adoption, it's, it's that last morning, correct?
Correct, yes. It'll be on Thursday morning, so.
Okay, so, you know, is there an opportunity for those of us who are comfortable getting together in a safe environment to be able to do it outside of a text? And, you know, because that doesn't, you know, either I'm a bad texter, a bad speller, or, you know, a whole variety of other things. And so I just would put that out for those who are comfortable in, in that setting, in a safe setting.
Right. So Mr., Madam Chair Supervisor Babbitt, yes. We are going to see Wednesday is the, excuse me, Tuesday afternoon is the typical welcome legislative panel. It's all going to be done virtually. Then Wednesday, most of our day will be in the, the normal session as you consider it. We, where we'd sit around the big table, hear from each other, give our rationale and reason. They have caucus time reserved for Wednesday afternoon. Historically, often that's been on the morning for breakfast, right before we go to the board meeting. They've also reserved Wednesday afternoon. We have the ability, should any of you want, and Julian and Claire all have this ability as well. We can set up as many meetings as we need if you want to have a conversation about things. We, as the lobbyists, the county managers, will be doing our floating, what we would normally do, floating and talking, trying to bring you all intelligence on where things are going, much of that by text and by understanding where things are at. But we can set that up. Craig has not explicitly scheduled time for those because I think they're much more organic. No different than, it's not CSA who organizes Supervisor Babbitt and Supervisor Smith talking about a water issue together on the sidebar. But really, you can use us for that. We are more than willing to throw a meeting quick together, send out the link quick, get everyone on it, and can be done very, very efficiently. And, and we obviously will be noticed, so we can do that. But I do think there's, I think that's a piece of it where CSA, their role has not been to facilitate the side conversations. That's where we can help make that happen very quickly for any of you that wish.
Okay.
And if you, and if that's even just one of you with other colonies, or even if you just want us to set it up because you need, for example, Mojave County to talk about our issue, let us know, we'll get it together and make it happen.
Yeah, maybe just a suggestion to CSA about process would be that if it's going to be like a Zoom meeting to utilize the Zoom breakout rooms. I mean, maybe there's just a time where, you know, each county has a breakout room and other counties can go to that room to, you know, to speak to folks. I think just some way of being able to have set aside some, some opportunities for open dialogue with, I mean, well, I shouldn't, dialogue like county to county about specific issues with maybe that county's proposals.
Very good idea. I will bring that up.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the state legislative proposals? All right, well, Eric, I just want to thank you and your team. I know an immense amount of work goes into assembling these packets and analyzing these proposals in order to prepare for the summit. And it's, as you, as you mentioned, it's fluid. So there likely be multiple changes before the summit as well, which entails, you know, more work on your team's behalf. And so thank you for the work you have done. And in advance, thank you for the work that you're going to do as leading up to the summit.
Absolutely, thank you very much, we appreciate, and we have a great team here that got it all done. And we had a great binder stuffing party the other night, so.
That's great, well, thank you very much. And so board members, we're going to go ahead then and because we are going to go immediately into executive session after the lunch break, we're going to go ahead and make that motion now, which would be to a motion to go into executive session at 1:15. And on that executive session, we do have three items. And so is there a motion to do so?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, to go into executive session. On the favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Okay, passes unanimously. And so we will have a recess for lunch. Right after lunch at 1:15, we will go into executive session. That will be a different sign on, as you know, for executive session. And we will start promptly at 1:15 because we have quite a few items we need to address before we end our meeting at 4:30. Okay, thank you so much. Well, welcome to our afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we have a few agenda items this afternoon. We are actually on item number 29 for discussion and possible action. Can you hear me? Because my, my
Can hear you.
Okay, thank you. For some reason, although I have my camera on, the video is not showing, so give me
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
That's probably okay. Let's see. Hold on one minute, please, and I'll see if I can figure this out. Okay, well, that's interesting. Well, in the meantime, until I figure this out, let's just go ahead and proceed. You can see a background, I don't know why you can't see me, but as long as you can hear me, that's important. So this is a meeting of the Board of Supervisors, or we met this morning, and now we are reconvening. We just completed an executive session. We have item number 29. This is consideration and possible action to ratify a settlement cancelling a contract with Hotel Aspen for housing insecure individuals diagnosed with COVID-19 pursuant to ARS 38-431.05. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved, so moved, sorry about that.
Okay, for a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to approve this item. Say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. We are now going to go to item number 30. This is a and possible action to approve an independent contractor agreement and purchase order between Flight Staff Shelter Services, Inc. and Coconial County to purchase services to provide hotel rooms at the tier one, yes, not to exceed $200,000 this full year 2021. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved. So moved.
Uh. There.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I'll just open up for, but I guess also I can call on Kim. I mean, we have, we did have some discussion on this last week. But Kim, did you have anything you wanted to add before we vote on this item? Kim Musselman from Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I don't have anything further to add unless there's any questions I can answer of the board, thank you.
Okay, as I mentioned, we did speak to this last week. And so, I, I think it's straightforward, it's a contract. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. All right, now we're going to go to item number 31. This is update discussion and possible action regarding the Coconino County's COVID-19 response. And I would like to call on Deputy County Manager Marie Peoples to present this item. Dr. Peoples?
Hi, Madam Chair, thank you, sorry, I was a little slow with the technology there. Interim Health and Human Services Director Kim Musselman is going to present most of the COVID update for us today. And before Kim starts, I do want to share that we are working on some additional reentry pathway forward information for the board. Ms. Erica Shaw has been instrumental in that and actually has a presentation prepared for this week's upcoming all-hands meeting. So we'll look forward to sharing more information there. And at this time, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Musselman.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. Kim, go right ahead.
Okay, I think I have started sharing my screen, can you let me know if. Okay, great, thank you.
Great, yeah, it's a full screen now, so super.
Perfect, oops, I skipped. Okay, thank you, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My pleasure to be here this afternoon to give a brief overview of, of our COVID-19 status as we are now in week 39 of our response. So just to highlight a few things, the community transmission currently, Coconino County has a current incident rate of 198.6 per 100,000 and a percent positivity of 7%. And a COVID-like illness incident or CLI of 3.3%, of 3%, excuse me. The, um, what this means in terms of the benchmarks is that we are, actually have one of each of these three categories in each of the three benchmarks. So for the case incident with the 178.6 per 100,000, that puts us in the substantial benchmark for that specific measurement. And then we are in the moderate for the percent positivity, falling there between the 5 and 10%. And then, of course, the COVID-like illness is in the green, which is at less than 5%. The case, uh, current case data over the last several weeks, as you see here before you, is now, as of October 4th, confirmed cases of just over 4,000, 4,211 in Flagstaff. Of course, you can see there the breakdown of there's 2,364. And then by the ZIP code, 001 at 1,129, 86004 at 803, 86005 at 247, and 86011 at 185. Tribal communities have a total case count of 1,333. Page 307, Williams 75, Grand Canyon Village in Tucson, 47, and then other areas in the county at 85. Of course, our cumulative percent positive over the course of the entire response is at 9%. And we have logged 41,663 negative tests as of October 4th. Our number of deaths in Coconino County is currently at 138, which is approximately 3% of our total cases. And of course, the hospitalizations, overall, we've had a total of 15% of our cases hospitalized with, at that number, 628. And currently, there are three. Just wanted to point out on this chart, as you can see, we had had quite a significant downturn and then, of course, had been in a bit of an upward spike. And as you can see of our week ending September 26th, last week, that we had a slight decrease in both total cases positive as well as our rate per 100,000. Just highlighting on this chart, again, the weekly cases by geographic region, you can see here that the blue is the Flagstaff area and that you can see those spikes. And currently, what is referenced on the previous chart in terms of those case numbers spiking up significantly and now looking to hopefully be on a downward trend again. And we'll be able to see a little bit better in terms of our weekly counts as we have just closed out another week with hopefully some decreased numbers as well. Just wanted to touch on, I know we've mentioned this to the board, we've been communicating this to the community as a whole with respect to the ADHS benchmark transitions and the process, and that in order to transition in either direction, the transmission level requires that all three benchmarks be met for a new level of transmission, whether that's higher or lower, and for 14 consecutive days. So the benchmarks that I covered previously, where we have one in each of the three categories, is true for all of Coconino County and including businesses and schools. One second, I apologize, I obviously pulled up the wrong screen here. The next piece I wanted to touch on is the testing by week. One of the great things that's been going on with our partnership with ASU and the saliva-based testing, as well as NAU conducting a great deal of testing. We have seen a significant increase in the total numbers of tests collected, as well as a, you know, somewhat of an increase with respect to the 7%. But I just wanted to point out on this chart here that while we have had a spike and we have increased in our percent positivity with respect to the number of tests we're doing, that we are, in essence, from, with respect to NAU and return of students back to our area, which occurred starting back in about August 8th. You can see that at that point in time, we were at about a 7% positivity rate. We certainly had the decrease for a handful of weeks. And then, as students fully returned there and additional testing was occurring, we had an increase. But I do want to point out, what's really significant is that the increase isn't just solely based on NAU students returning, that we do have our spike in our Flagstaff region and it is across Flagstaff in all, in all different areas, not just exclusive to NAU and student population. This chart here is something that I don't think any of you have seen yet. We have just recently been gathering this data out of the ASU testing data directly from their laboratory. And what this chart is showing you is the cumulative test results for our Coconino County sites. And I want to preface that it's cumulative saliva test results. And so, of course, ADHS, or, excuse me, our Coconino County Fort Tuthill site, and then the Grand Canyon mobile collection site that we did a few weeks back, the Mounds Park Pinewood event that we held a week, a week and a half ago. Those were also saliva-based, and then, of course, NAU's Fieldhouse collection of testing samples. And so, you can see these high numbers, NAU Fieldhouses is at over 10,000 tests that they've been collecting. And we've collected almost 4,000 at Fort Tuthill, as specific to the saliva-based. And this is representative of the positive, negative, and then, of course, invalid tests that return. Since we started this testing back, and you started it on September 2nd, and we started our saliva-based testing on September 8th. So we're doing a lot of testing, and despite all of that testing, our percentages are, you know, staying relatively manageable, certainly much lower than where we were at the beginning of this outbreak. So that is trending positive and we're encouraged by the number of testing, the number of folks showing up to test. We did have a very large turnout yesterday at Fort Tuthill. Understand, we're having another very large turnout again today. And we are seeing that folks are, at least at the Tuthill site, and I'll only speak for that because we're not at the Fieldhouse site other than getting numbers, that people are, were showing up certainly with symptoms, more symptomatic folks coming through to be tested, as well as others who have been exposed to people who have tested positive. The NAU Fieldhouse, I just want to make a note on this as well, NAU does have the ability to gather data related to their students, faculty, and staff. And so, they have advised us that approximately 20% of that number is not NAU-affiliated. Of course, the NAU Fieldhouse site is open to all of the public for testing, as is our Fort Tuthill site. And we have a similar, we believe we have a similar situation where not, obviously not all of the people going to the Tuthill site are exclusively other Flagstaff and county residents outside of NAU and in fact, also have some amount of folks that are from out of county. With respect to the testing, the last piece I just wanted to cover is we continue to navigate our extension of our contract with ASU. We are working through some of those details related to the need to have access to some critical information and fields with respect to address and phone number and some email, number of folks that can sign up under one email. We continue to work through those, think that we're going to find a successful resolution. We are very pleased, and I know that the community is pleased with the ASU specimen collection saliva-based testing as it is a much less invasive type of test, as well as very quick turnaround of results. So we are looking forward to being able to continue that. They have also joined us on a, several of our mobile collection sites around the county, and we look forward to continuing that process as well. We have just completed mobile collections in Tucson, Mounds Park, Blue Ridge, and Page for a total of 226 specimens collected over the last, took place over the last three weeks. And then, of course, at Fort Tuthill have collected over 4,600 samples. And the NAU collection site, as I indicated before, has collected over 10,577. We have another mobile collection event that is taking place in Williams on October 15th, and another one in Tucson on October 22nd. The Williams event in particular is going to be in partnership with North Country Healthcare. We have partnered with Canyonlands Healthcare for the Page event. Of course, ASU joining us as well and our own HHS staff. Just wanted to share also that at the Page event, as well as here in Flagstaff and the Tucson event, we also have added, in Mounds Park, many of them, we are trying to combine mobile flu clinics when we take these operations on the road. And in fact, have also had census collection happening at, well, as well at those sites. And so, we're, we're happy that we've been able to combine all of those things and try to touch as many people as possible. The last piece that I wanted to cover before I ask if there's any questions, we have been getting information about the release of and the distribution of the Bionex Now testing machines. Many of you may have heard the governor on his last press conference refer to these, as well as on the national level communications coming out. We are excited to be receiving these at some point through ADHS. They expect to receive 142,000 of these kits to be distributed to counties based on population. We continue, as always, to advocate that Coconino County's allocation is not solely based on population, but also on need and our, our testing population and percent positive and other issues. We don't always prevail in that, but we continue to advocate. ADHS expects 2.19 million kits by the end of the year, and this will be in addition to one kits that the federal government is going to directly ship to nursing homes and other living facilities. What is in, what we are understanding about these Bionex Now is that they are intended for use with K through 12 schools in congregate settings and vulnerable populations as part of a testing mitigation strategy. So we're excited to continue to learn more about this and, and when we will be getting specific kits allocated to Coconino County that we can get distributed throughout to our schools and other community-based services. So with that, I think I have covered everything. If there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain them.
Great, thank you, Kim. So let's open it up to questions. One question I have is, so for the Britnax tests kits, have we received any of those in Coconino County? And if so, can you give us some information on how many? And then, how are we distributing those? Or maybe I should say, how is the state distributing those?
Right, so, and Chair Ochoa, just for my clarification, you're asking specifically about those Bionex Now.
Bionex, yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. We are just in the early phases of getting information. Mike Oxby, the Chief Health Officer, has been sitting on those meetings with the Arizona Department of Health Services. We have been told to expect them. We do not know yet what the allocation process is going to look like. We kind of are learning things on a week-by-week basis. So we hope to have some additional information this Friday when Mike joins that ALOA meeting to gather some additional information. So sorry, that's all I have so far. We're excited about it, it's a 15-minute test, it is an antigen test, so it will show active virus. And hopefully will be very useful. It is still a nasal therongeal type of swab, but it's a self-administered swab.
Okay, thank you for that. And will it be the state that will determine how those are distributed? Or will the county, will they give them to the county and then the county will decide how they're distributed?
Thank you, Chair Ochoa, I think it will be a combination. Certainly, the state will determine how many are going to come to the county, but we will be, have some guidelines with respect to how we will be able to distribute those out in our communities. One of the primary focuses that we have, that we understand is specifically areas that are, you know, extremely rural and have even less accessibility to testing are to be prioritized. So it'll really going to determine how many we actually get in our first round of shipment. And then, of course, we are to expect additional shipments up through and, including through the end of the year and into early next year as well.
Okay, great, let me see if there are other questions from the board. Board members, other questions?
Madam Chair.
Grab it, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just appreciate the update, Kim. I just really want to, you know, thank you personally for, you always take the time to help explain, like, there's so many nuances behind this data. And there's so many challenges around when timing aligns with data that comes out of the state, comes out of ours, goes to the schools. And so, it is a, it is a smorgas, smorgish board of timing and data. And just really appreciate how patient you are with those of us who ask questions to better understand what's going on. So thank you very, very much and really appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you, Supervisor Babbitt. It's really a team effort over here. We have incredible staff that are constantly working on these data pieces, getting us answers, talking to the state. And, you know, it couldn't be done without everybody actively, you know, pulling on each side of the oar, if you will, so that we can get those answers and find the answers to the questions that people have and try to, try to explain and make it less confusing, so thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for instilling that, that culture there because, you know, you're super responsive and I know you send them out to the subject matter experts and they come back quickly and they're understandable, they're intelligible. And then, that allows us to convey that to the people who we serve too, so thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Kim, thank you Supervisor Babbitt. Any, any other questions or comments from the board? Any, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you, Kim. Dr. Peoples, anything further from you?
No ma'am, I think Kim covered it all and did a terrific job. And actually, I will share, so we had our first meeting with Charter Schools this week and I just really appreciate the HHS staff, including Kim, doing that. It was very well received by the Charter Schools. As the board is aware, we've been meeting bi-weekly with the public schools and that's included several Charter Schools, but this meeting was specifically for Charter Schools. And so that seemed to help a lot, as Supervisor Babbitt indicated. I like his terminology, it is a smorgasbord of information and that smorgasbord changes daily. And so anytime we have the opportunity to clarify information and share and to receive feedback, we really appreciate it. So thanks so much to the board and to County Manager Jane.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. And then, let's see, for the saliva testing, just can you tell us how much longer we have that partnership with ASU? Just so the public knows that, like, how much longer are we doing the saliva testing?
Thank you, Chair Archuleta, yes, happy to answer that question. We currently have an agreement with ASU for, through October tenth, we've also been given the verbal agreement that they will provide us with testing kits Thanksgiving, up to Thanksgiving, which is kind of the same timeframe for which they are in an arrangement with NAU testing site as well. We anticipate there, that moving forward in that fashion as long as we're able to kind of close the loop on a couple of other concerns regarding some of the data points and collection, which I think we will get to this week. We should be able to have that remedied, but we're very hopeful that, and the intent is to continue with the ASU partnership through Thanksgiving.
Okay, great. And I think just in terms of the schools and decisions that they're making in terms of, you know, going back and just having a hybrid model or going from, you know, to various, or staying remotely or, you know, do we, so you said you went with the Charter Schools and then you're updating probably all the schools and the superintendents, right? You want to give a little bit, a little bit more information on that?
Sure, thank you, Chair Archuleta. We are, actually have another meeting with our, all of our public schools and superintendents scheduled for tomorrow, either tomorrow or Thursday afternoon, I apologize. We have been meeting bi-weekly with all of the school superintendents across the county and continue to share information. We also continue, we have a specific form and portal for schools to enter issues with kids testing positive or other exposures that we have a team here at HHS who is specifically assigned to the various schools to respond within two hours, no later than two hours to those questions and issues that each of the schools are experiencing. And we're having, you know, very good success with that. We really appreciate our partnership with the schools, understanding the guidance that we're able to provide but also recognizing that ultimately what we do here at HHS is we provide guidance to them and those school districts have the really tough decision-making responsibility that we give them data and information to apply to the best of their ability. So we continue to experience a really good relationship and openness of asking questions and knowing that we are here to help the schools along the way.
Great, thanks, Kim.
And Chair Archuleta, if you don't mind, I, there was a couple of other questions that had come up just with respect for requests to me to clarify regarding the Bionex Now, the rapid tests. And there was a concern or issue of false negatives. The, the Bionex tests are again an antigen test and so typically those are testing devices that certainly are encouraged to be utilized for people who are symptomatic. They seem to have a good reliability and certainly less of a false negative situation than some of the other, the PCR testing that we have, the other Abbott type of machine that we have. Not a hundred percent certain yet on what those reliability and percentages are, but we do understand that they are supposed to be much better and have fewer false negative situations. And they are, when these kits are, they're, they're kind of self, I'm trying to think what word I want. They, they don't need a separate machine or to enter the sample into such as the Abbott that we currently have. These come with the test kits include the actual device that does the lab work, if you will, comes entirely with the kit. And each of these kits are designed to be distributed individually. They don't have to have a home base to enter into a machine. So we're excited that we're going to be getting them and look forward to what they're going to add to our toolbox, if you will.
Thank you. What, I know Lucinda had a couple of questions from, that she's been getting out of the community. So Lucinda, go ahead, would you like to ask those questions?
Thank you, thank you. The, the question, really, Kim just answered both of those. It was a question I'd been getting in the community about the false negatives and a concern about that. So thank you, Kim.
Okay, great, wonderful. All right, well, thank you. Are there any further questions? County Manager Jane?
No, Madam Chair, I'm just ready for the next item when you are, thank you.
Super, well, thank you. Thank, thank you very much. We appreciate that information and your work. Okay, so County Manager Jane, go ahead and, this is Liz Archuleta. I am on the meeting, but for some reason now you can't even see my name anymore. So I apologize, I'm having some technical difficulties, but please know I'm, can hear and I am engaged. You just can't, I'm just having problems with the video. So go ahead, this is item number thirty-two. This is discussion and update from the County Manager regarding possible community, regional, and/or administrative matters. Go ahead, County Manager Jane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, so you know, we do see your name and you are listed as a participant, so.
Oh, well, great.
And in answer to, to the question regarding the bi-weekly schools meeting, Kim, that is scheduled for this Thursday at one o'clock. So that will be Thursday at one and that's been well-attended by our K-12 schools from throughout the county. Madam Chair, just want to remind the board that there is a Tri-Diversity Council meeting on the seventh. That's at five-thirty, so that's tomorrow at five-thirty. We do have, as was mentioned earlier, an all-hands meeting scheduled, Town Hall, excuse me, scheduled for Thursday, eleven-thirty to one. Again, that's this Thursday, eleven-thirty to one. We can have Lindsay post it if we anticipate more than the Chair and Vice Chair participating in that meeting. Again, Thursday at eleven-thirty, all hands. I do have a County Managers Meeting, we'll be doing virtually this, this Friday. Just to remind the board that our next board meeting is next Tuesday. It's the second Tuesday, so it'll be the evening meeting. Lindsay and I had been chatting about, depending on the contents, it looks like we are going to plan for a six o'clock start. We had gone back and forth between five and six, but based on a fairly light agenda. I hope I didn't curse that. It's that, again, next Tuesday, we plan to start at six o'clock for our next board meeting. I just wanted to let the board know, I know Supervisor Babbitt is aware of this, that Gail Jackson has been appointed as the new President and CEO for Ekonah. She had been acting in an interim capacity, but she has officially been appointed as the President and CEO of Ekonah. Regarding the schools discussion, there is a, as many of you know, a Flagstaff Unified School District Board meeting this evening at five-thirty where they are talking about kind of their phased approach. They'll be bringing back a plan after their meeting two weeks ago, which was a fairly long meeting, but out of that, they'll be presenting this evening. Staff will be their new phased approach plan. So we'll see what comes out of that and then cross another bridge at that point. But just want to say again, thank you to Maria and Kim and the HHS team for your partnership with, with our, our schools throughout the county and reviewing their plans and helping to provide guidance, understanding that we do not make decisions for them, that that has been entrusted with the local elected school board. But I just want to thank you for your partnership with our school boards and the youth of our communities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for County Manager Jane? Okay, no questions at this time, so thank you. We can now then move on to our roundtable. And this is just an opportunity for any member of the board who wishes to bring an update or any information to be shared. And so Supervisor, and you can participate or you can pass. Supervisor Babbitt, anything you'd like to share?
I do not, I have a work I got to get to here as quick as I can. So I am going to let this one go, but really appreciate all the presentations today and your management of those presentations, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. Anything you'd like to add?
I'm sorry, I, I thought Art was going to speak a little bit there and I'm behind the eight ball here.
Well, that's okay.
The only thing I have is that a mountain lion was sighted at First Mesa and so they're cautioning joggers and runners to be aware of their surroundings. So that's it, thank you.
Okay, great. And what I have to add is that tonight we'll have a Timberline Firmwood Neighborhood Watch meeting. And so that is something we'll be looking forward to. And then just a reminder to all those who are, who are joining this meeting today that there is still time to request a ballot by mail to be able to vote at home. So please do that. Yesterday was the last day to register to vote, but plenty of time to request a ballot by mail.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry for the interruption. I just wanted to make everyone aware that a federal judge did yesterday extend the registration deadline until the twenty-third of October. So we have been working with the recorder to publicize.
Oh, wonderful, Eric, thank you so much. That's great, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of media around that.
Yes.
Oh, that's great news, okay, so do it now, right? Register to vote right now, that's perfect, that's great. Well, I look forward to putting that out on my social media. Well, that's great news. County Manager Jane?
Madam Chair, I had one other quick issue that between now and when we meet again, we have a supervisor celebrating a birthday on Sunday. So happy early birthday to Supervisor Parks, who has a birthday on October eleventh.
Oh, great, well, happy birthday Supervisor Parks.
Thank you.
And for his birthday, I'm going to get past the junk vehicle ordinance from Yavapai County, which will then eliminate one of his vehicles.
Which one you eliminated? Several.
Might be the canoe for Art.
Yeah, you want me to, you want to include that canoe, Art?
That's great, well, there we go, that's how we, that's how we roll here in Coconino County.
Thanks, guys.
Happy birthday, Jim, hope you have a great day, filled with lots of cake and adventure. All right, all, thank you so much for today's meeting, have a great rest of the evening.